All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We'll call our meeting to order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a roll call.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
All right, do we have approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item five is public participation. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Anyone on Zoom? If not, we'll move on. Next, we have presentations. Do we have any presentations for this evening? Okay. Item seven is a public hearing. It's a public hearing regarding plans, specifications, and form of a contract for the Macocata Municipal Airport is Reconstruction Runway Fifteen End Project.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Adam Thompson with McClure Engineering is with us tonight, so if we have any in-depth questions regarding this project, I will defer to him. But I've included some background in your packet about leading up to this moment effectively for probably the last ten to fifteen years. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the property, we do have some degraded runway north of the property that is not usable, as you can see in the map. This project would be ninety percent funded by the FAA. McClure Engineering was the firm that did the engineering for this project and provided an estimate of one point seven eight seven million dollars for this. And McClure Public Works Director Frank Owens, I think, did a great job recruiting competition into this, into this work, which is why you see eight bidders on this project before you tonight. And Boomerang is the recommendation at one point two seven nine million. They're from Monticello, a fairly local company. McClure did some reference checking, they did reference checking of Boomerang, and found that they're a responsible bidder in this project. There is no reason to have concern over that, but it is something that McClure Engineer, as our business consultant and engineer, will be managing the project much in the same way that other engineer groups do for us on this. So we just can't have city staff manage an FAA project. We are not administratively capable, and there's a lot of expert knowledge that goes into every FAA job. If you're curious on what happens with FAA grants, when you sign into FAA external funding money, it comes with a twenty-year grant contingency. And since 2011, the city has obtained about one point eight million dollars from the FAA. Most of it's gone towards some objective for this runway purpose, land acquisition, lowering of power lines, engineering and those things. And so going back to, to last year and prior times and entering a little bit into this year, the FAA was kind of aware that we were kind of scrambling to find a way to get this project done. And did send something of a message to us that they may claim their right to that money back if we don't complete the project. So I think it's critical to understand that as you vote tonight and as we discuss this item. I think at this point, we did have the money. We did have the money located, let's just say that, through our capital improvement program. And we had to shuffle around our CIP and last year's budget and carry that forward. But this, to me, will end up as a good project, but it is very much required by the FAA and something that will set us up in the future for a very long time. If you recall, the capital improvement program that McClure also helped us out with, what you see or did see was very much no more land acquisition, no east-west runway. We have what we have. We need to be thinking about hangar rehabs and concrete maintenance at this point if you want to keep a Macocata Airport. I think that's very well understood by city staff. I think that's very well understood by the Airport Commission. I think that if you read into your agenda when we approved that, I think you all know that. So I'll take any questions on this project. Now would probably be your finest opportunity to ask me or to ask Adam what other details might go into this proposal tonight.
How much of that borrowed money can the FAA reclaim?
Well, it's-
Pro-rated based on?
I understand grant contingencies with FAA to be all of it. It does not prorate or disappear or waterfall. Is that correct, Adam? Yes.
My only question would be, you know, it's, it's great to have a low bid like this, but are we going to get hit with change order upon change order and end up paying the one point seven million in the end? I mean, just our tolerance for change orders is, is getting really low.
Seems to be the method by these contractors. I mean, they're gonna say no.
I know, I'm just-
Boomerang did the street, I think, up on Forest Drive.
They did, yep.
So after we extend the runway, do we have to do anything else out there dollar-wise to?
You'll have to maintain, otherwise there could be some FAA angle that a runway is unsafe and unusable. I think in this particular instance, what is there for FAA, I'm sorry, for runway presently, the thirty-three hundred feet that is out there? The PCI on that is in the mid-eighties, which is really good. That's a scale one hundred. That's still in the very good concrete health. So, so to me and what was before you in that plan was maintaining your apron, maintaining your taxiways, your, your runway. And, you know, I've had the conversations with the FAA that, my gosh, have you visited our airport and seen the hangar condition? Is there a better way to apply grant funding money? But we need to finish this because they've invested in this for a very long time, and the engineer plans are only good for three years before we have to go into engineering contract again. And we finished engineering on this in 2023, but started that contract immediately in 2022. It's a dilemma, and everyone I talk to, if you're not flying or frequently flying, doesn't wholly understand this. But my pitch to the council and has been that we really need to finish this. But it's something that long-term, if you want to keep a Macocata Airport, you need to be thinking about what comes with external fundings like this.
How long do we have to maintain that concrete, say, after this project's done? Like, do we have to maintain it for a certain amount of time because of this FAA money we've gotten?
Twenty years, right?
Yeah, so as long as you want to maintain an airport, you need to maintain the health of that concrete. I mean, you'd also open up, I think, liability concerns for knowingly letting concrete degrade and eclipse an airplane's tires that's landing. I don't think it's a territory you want to go into.
Let's just say, like, we do this project, whatever, and ten years down the road, the city decides that, you know, hey, maybe we don't need an airport. Are we stuck for that twenty years to keep going on this? Or, like you say, in ten years, can we say, hey, maybe we can sell the airport to somebody else or?
I can't speak to that because I don't know. Adam, have you ever heard of, you can have the podium too. Hey there, Adam Thompson, McClure Engineering. It doesn't happen very often, but there, there is a process where cities owners of airport can sell the airport, and then they pay back whatever balance is owed to the FAA with the, the funds that they recoup from the sale. So there is a process.
Is there a timeline that, like I said, so, say, if we were to sell it in ten years and we receive this amount of money? So like, how much money would we have to pay back?
So generally, the FAA starts at you owe all of it, and there's a negotiation process down to what it actually looks like at the end of the day.
So like even in ten years?
Yes. Yep, and that, and that happens, that twenty-year timeframe happens every time that you take funding from the FAA.
At the twenty-year mark, say, if the city wanted to sell it, then we wouldn't have to pay any money back?
Correct.
Okay.
Who does the upkeep and the maintenance and inspections to determine that the runway, once you see we add this addition on there, who is inspecting that and maintaining that runway?
The Iowa Department of Transportation does a review of the, the PCI, the pavement health. But it, it can be up to local. It can be up to FAA funding. Depends how we want to approach it. Give you an example, last year it never came before council, but on one of those taxiways has a very poor PCI rating. We did some crack filling out there, just trying to do some preventative maintenance so we don't fall into another trap.
I would think the answer is Public Works maintains the airport, basically.
Yeah, the DOT comes around every two years to do their inspection. They do a report with the PCI quality condition of the runway. But exactly what Josh said, the crack sealing is the most important maintenance thing you can do to preserve the quality of the pavement and extend the life of the, of the runway.
Do we still have the helicopter people out there?
We do. Yep, and thank you, Mayor. One other point is, I mean, Councilman Alinger knows we're in as good as business shape as you could be in. We're, we're fully rented. Both corporate hangars are being rented. The B cap's got three in there. And, you know, remove grants and incomes and expenditures. You still are subsidizing the Macocata Airport a little bit. That's a fact. We can come really close, but it's never going to be budget positive. It's an economic impact asset. So it, it's, it's something that I dot counts on helping industry, crop dusters. If there's visitors or travelers to our area, that's your benefit. And that's, I think, why the Macocata City Council became heavily involved in this project many years ago is because of industrial developments. Hey, we're gonna fly in Family Dollars, we're gonna fly in a Genarac at that time. Hey, you guys have an airport. And I think those sorts of things is what started snowballing this mission. It's not anyone's fault here today that this was really in front of you. The other thing I'll mention too, and I think it's a little bit more exciting, is we're also speaking with the University of Dubuque about a student externship program and thinking about how can they drive down our basic maintenance costs out on the site just to try to get that budget number as close to neutral as possible, so it's not as impactful.
The only other question I have is how often do they inspect that concrete? Like, how often does the Department of Transportation come in and inspect?
Yeah, every two years.
Every two years they come and inspect? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Simonsen, seconded by Lyon to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is a public hearing regarding our proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget and CIP.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I, I really attached quite a bit in your council packet. So if you have any questions I can answer, please feel free to ask. But I provided, I think, a comprehensive summary analysis and also attached our entire accounting report for your review. To many people, that's like seeing a foreign language, but we do the best we can to try to explain it, and we utilize our Finance and Personnel Committee to develop the plan, to explain issues, and we've been working on that since November together. Overall, I think the Finance and Personnel Committee and city staff would tell you that fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is not going to be a good year. But we look forward into the following year of having a positive year. It's not remarkably positive. There's still work to do, and that we still have some long-term funding issues, I think, that are gonna go, become more challenging anyway with the rise of insurance and payroll and a lot of the other kind of auxiliary services that cities do. So I think there's long-term implications. But if you had any questions on what was in your background or distributed out to you all, because we are hoping to approve this tonight so that we can move on and close the budget for this year and start thinking about ways we can improve ourselves in the following fiscal year.
Anybody have any questions?
I got my question answered early on, so I'm good.
Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion by Colister, seconded by Alinger to close the public hearing. There's no discussion. Take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to item eight, which is our consent agenda. It consists of the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting and the April first, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting. Item B is bills payable through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. It includes the March financial reports. Item D is a renewal of a Class C retail alcohol license filed by Bill's Tavern. Item E is a new Class C alcohol license filed by Punkies Cans to Cash LLC. Item F, amended Class C retail liquor license filed by the Jackson County Fair Association. And item G is a renewal Class B retail alcohol license filed by Can City.
So moved.
A motion by Colister, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, item nine is old business, and A is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macocata, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to ATVs, Chapter seventy-five point zero five, and this is the third reading.
I don't have anything further to add, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister, seconded by Rick Earl. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Item B is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Macocata, Iowa by amending Chapter seven zero point zero three parking violations. And this is the third reading of that. Anything you want to add?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, motion by Colister, seconded by Alinger. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macocata, Iowa by adding new stop signs on Bear River Drive, and this is the third reading. Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes. Item D is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macocata, Iowa to rescind golf carts, Chapter seventy-eight. And this is the second reading.
Mayor?
Yeah.
May I?
Yeah, please.
Just, I don't know if this vote's gonna pass tonight. It was pretty skinny last time. I, I do recommend that if it does fail, it goes back to Public Safety Committee. It's pretty open-ended right now as an ordinance, and I think it deserves further review, especially since this is now included in your ordinance by way of administrative mistake. So depending on the vote results, if it does fail, that's my recommendation as your manager.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add, I talked to Mark Beck about the letter and, and the thing, and I, my point I made to him is regardless of how you feel about golf carts, having an ordinance that someone just pasted into our book of ordinances and we accidentally approved it and going, sure, let's just use that one, right? You know, what we need to do, I, I believe, is rescind this ordinance and basically have Public Safety create one that's for Macocata. You know, this, it's, I mean, I've read through it. It's a good ordinance, but I think we need to make an ordinance that's for Macocata, not just some sort of kind of random ordinance.
I think we just send it to committee. I know we've had one read on it, but why can't we just send it to committee right now?
Because it's, because it's currently part of our ordinance book. We need to get it out of there and then start over and start over. Finally, it was voted, the way it was voted last time was to slow it down or get some public, and I've received several calls.
I did too.
And I, several texts, and it was probably fifty-fifty. It was crazy, and so.
I mean, the ones I've got, I don't know, there's more people that want it than don't. I honestly, I don't, I was always against it, but, I mean, it's not about what I think or what I want. It's about what the people want. And the calls that I've gotten and the texts that I've gotten, the more people are for it than against it. It's just a matter of getting it there, making it so it's safe or somewhat safe. It is kind of where I'm at with the whole situation.
I talked to six different people over the weekend personally, and every single one of them were against it. I have, the only one that I've heard for it was the letter that we read at the last meeting.
Well, I'm like everybody else. I've heard probably fifty-fifty both ways.
I have heard fifty-fifty both ways as well. And one of the things kind of in what Josh has shared is, I said, well, it was put in there by mistake. We didn't have, you know, the thought process, and it didn't go through that whole regular routine. It was just a mistake. So I'm in total agreement. We need to get it out and then put it forward.
Yep, start from fresh.
How soon can it be put on the safety agenda, Safety Committee agenda?
Well, I was gonna bring that up later, but I'm looking to have a Public Safety Committee agenda on an unrelated topic, possibly even midweek this week, and we can at least start introducing the desires of, of what the committee may want. But that wasn't my intention with that meeting.
Can we suspend the rules and do the third reading tonight too?
I think you can. If that's a unanimous and a supermajority vote, and then we can move about in that direction, and then we can start fresh and consider this in a restrictive way that makes sense for Macocata.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the second reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Simonsen, seconded by Lyon. Do we have any more discussion? Take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules and continue on with the third reading.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon to go to the third reading. And do we have any discussion on that? Then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Motion to proceed with the third reading.
Second.
A motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon to move to the third reading. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We make it to new business. Item A under new business is a resolution approving the city budget and CIP for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Anything you want to add, Josh?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is a resolution approving plans, specifications, and form of contract for the Macocata Municipal Airport Reconstruction Runway E, or Reconstruction Runway Fifteen End Project and accepting a bid in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars submitted by Boomerang Corp.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Simonsen. Any discussion? Anything you want to add?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution approving purchase of a Leagut lift station pump replacement at the South Slope Lift Station for a total of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. Jen, are you prepared to talk about this one? We discussed it Public Works Committee, but you can wrap up a quick summary for them.
So we had a lift station pump, when they did the maintenance contract at South Slope go down, it was pulling different amperages, so we had them take it in. Long story short, it, the cost to repair it was twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The cost to replace it, the first cost I got was around twenty-six thousand. That's for the identical pump. And I went to write up a council packet on it, and the pump company called me and said that was brand new in twenty nineteen. And for a pump to last four years, I felt like it needed further looked at. So they went ahead and come in and did pump curves and did drawdowns on the lift station to kind of do some comparisons. I've, I've asked a couple of their pump companies to come in and give me an estimate. And for the size of pump we need, because of the pump head that it pumps, they couldn't compare with it. They, they could give me a quote on the pump that was in it, but again, it only lasted four years for the twenty-six thousand dollars. So after talking with Frank and talking with the pump company, the recommendation is to go with the flight. That's kind of the king of the kings. And that's where we're at.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Any more discussion? Take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes. Item D is a resolution approving a contract amendment number five in the amount of twenty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars submitted by Origin Design for the Platt Street Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Any discussion?
I, I don't have anything further to offer other than we discussed this at Public Works Committee, and Andy Godkin from Origin Design offered to be here in case the council broadly had any more questions.
Okay. We have nothing more. Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E is a resolution approving the Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for Traffic Safety Improvement Program funding in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand dollars for Main and Summit Street Intersection Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the, the better part of the agenda, where you're dreaming of a Main and Summit Street where the back right tire of the truck doesn't jump a curb. So it's a routine state of funding agreement that's attached to your packet. We've had a little bit of a back and forth with I dot about the retaining walls. We've met with all the neighbors on each corner, started gathering some preferences. Hey, these are the goals of the improvement. We, we kept, if you, if you read the agreement, we, we used the word modified retaining walls to improve site distance. So that was kind of the whole up and back and forth I had, is to make sure we didn't end up in a language trap. Otherwise, it's ready for your approval tonight.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item F is a resolution approving Jackson County Engineering Estimate Fee in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents for the final engineering services on the Main and Summit Street Intersection Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I think a real highlight over in the Jackson County offices is the addition of Todd Kenny in the Engineering Department and Jaden Sheckel. They've been fantastic employees over there, and they allowed us to use their services last year to produce this grant application. And because they're so familiar with it, and it seemed like it would be a, a good job for them, they offered to take this through to Final Design. So they provide an estimate of ten thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents. That's what the resolution is before you tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item G is a resolution accepting bids for abatement mowing.
Mayor, Council, this was a bid by our front office staff, and Mow and Grow Lawn Care is the lowest responsible bidder in this. That's a Tipton company. They're moving to Macocata, in case you've never heard of them before. But we do have contingencies in our agreement that if there's any sort of unsatisfactory performance, we do move on. But as a matter of first priority with our mowing abatements, if there's twelve-inch grass and neglected lawns, that's is what happens. There's photographs, there's a violation, there's a call to the mower. They go out and mow it, and then it gets billed out to the homeowner. So that's what's for you, is we have to mow, I'm sorry, we have to contract this out each year, and this is done by resolution each year.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coolman?